Yeah, yeah.
Alright, everybody ready to go here?
Around and I'm having the time, but you know, you've got the picture. I'd like to do all that. There's anything I can do.
Alright, it's seven o'clock on the twenty-fourth of April. This is our Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting. The roll call, I'm George Clausen, the chairman, Peter Marchand, the vice chair, John Cooney, Craig Sandin, Lou Platt, Troy Lemire is alternate, Charlene LaBoya alternate, and Adam Hardley-Early is alternate. Public comment. Do we have anything that's not on our agenda that anybody has anything to say? Yes, Pam?
Um, I was just inquiring about-
Your, uh, could you just get your name, please?
Christina Span, sorry.
And where do you live?
Uh, Eleventh Fin Street.
Okay.
Um, and my zoning permit for putting a change has been in the wetlands approval since February sixth. So I was just inquiring about that and seeing why it's taking so long, or if there's anything else that you guys need from me.
Well, we're, we're planning and zoning, so-
Yeah, they told me to check in with you guys and-
And that's in my inbox, it must be. So, uh, what's the address again? You said six-
Eleven Fin F I N.
Eleven, okay.
Yeah.
Know anything about it?
I do not, but I'm gonna look at it tomorrow. What's your phone number, if you don't mind?
Sure, eight six zero-
Yup.
Six eight one-
Yup.
Nine six two zero.
Thank you, I'm sorry. I was away for two weeks, so things are better a little.
When was it, uh, when, when did you file it?
Uh, beginning of February, and then it moved pretty quickly to, um, the wetlands approval stage two, and it's been in that since.
And they haven't moved on it?
And I haven't seen any movement since. I checked the website and it looks like, um, this, this week, today especially when I checked, it's buffering and it's not letting me see anything, so it's taking a little bit, but computers, whatever it is, but yeah. Um, so I haven't seen any updates since I have gotten the call.
Lance, Lance will be able to give you a call and give you an update.
It's probably got the initials MS next to it, and if that's the case, I'll reassign it to myself and then we can move it through.
Okay. I didn't see any initials, but awesome. I appreciate your help. That's all.
We had, we had an enforcement person, and if he was gonna do something, he's moved to another location out of the town, so.
Oh, okay.
Alright, so he'll give you a call tomorrow.
Excellent. I appreciate it. That's all. Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Anybody else in the audience have anything that they'd like to contribute or ask, or, okay? Uh, agenda review. Anything from anybody? Alright, number four A, PCC twenty-three dash one is a special permit request, public hearing continued to May eighth. Applicant Wendy Scanlon. Owner, uh, Impetus Properties, location three ninety-eight Main Street. Proposal mixed-use retail, small shop to recreation and entertainment facility, indoor private. I'd like to suggest that we, uh, this has been going on for months.
Before you make a motion or anything, I want to just explain, because we had a conversation last time about how that works out for timing. So it was submitted on January fourth, was received on January ninth. Opened a public hearing within sixty-eight day, sixty-five days, which would have been March eighteenth, uh, which was at the PCC meeting-
Which we didn't open.
-March thirteenth.
Yeah, there wasn't a public hearing held.
We didn't-
No, no, right. So then after that applicant is allowed up to sixty-five days convenience in totality, I guess. And then public hearing must be opened by May nineteenth.
You have something in writing from her?
I told her today that it wasn't gonna be today, but next week, next meeting is her cutoff, and then she'd have to reapply.
How many days is that?
Uh, so we're into sixty-five, sixty-five, and then thirty-five. Best to be closed in thirty-five.
You mean she already gave you, uh, something in writing about extending it another sixty-five days?
Uh, technically, I never received anything in writing.
Well, if we don't have it, we're not gonna deal with it that way.
And we've had it on the agenda like six times, and no one's ever shown up here-
Right.
To talk to us.
And you said they, uh, she hadn't noticed her butters for this.
That's been the issue, unfortunately.
Alright, well, let's, let's, what we can do is deny it without prejudice, let her make a new application. And let's get it into a timely, informative approach to this so that we can get it. It's not a complicated application. And, uh, let's get it handled, but let's not get something where somebody could challenge us just because of that. Do we have a motion to deny it without prejudice?
I'll make a motion to deny without prejudice. PCC application twenty-three dash one, special permit, uh, applicant Wendy Scanlon, owner of impetus properties, three ninety-eight Main Street.
I'll second that. Any other discussion of the motion? All in favor? Okay, thank you. This is four, then it goes to six, then it goes to five, so we'll, six was the continuation of this, uh, this discussion on the same application that was just denied. Uh, five is new business, none. Other business set a public hearing for formal adoption of the revised PCC regulations per general code recommendations. Uh, I've talked to a few of us here on the commission, uh, the last time we talked about it, I said, please, let's review this and talk about it tonight. I went through it at length. I, I frankly, I don't see the motivation for, and I called Josh to get some clarification, and he hasn't called me back. I'm not happy with taking, uh, what I think are fairly straightforward regulations and eliminating a whole bunch of stuff. I don't know what the, what the, uh, what we're gonna gain from it, or who's gonna gain from it. So, uh, I'm, I'm not even interested in talking about it tonight, so let's go around the table. Anybody have any comments about it?
We've asked for some changes in it, and like, they've got committee in here, several places inside a commission. I think, you know, commercial recreation should be allowed in the town gateway, um, no mentions of golf courses allowed anywhere. And we had also talked at length about the marina parking, which none of this has been updated in here. So I can't see approving it until those updates are done. That's-
But I think, you know, we should have had some kind of an introduction and a summary of where we're going, or why-
It'd be nice to have somebody to discuss this and explain it in detail. Because it's a drastic change from what we've always had.
It's very unusual, given that these are the regulations of this, that are promulgated by this commission. This is the law of planning and zoning in Winchester, and we had nothing to do with it.
Nope.
And just to be asked to review it and pro forma, send it for a public hearing, that's not appropriate.
I don't, I just don't, I was-
Yeah, I agree.
I, as well as George, was intimately involved in revising these, so we spent months on these. And arbitrarily come through, and I mean, they're eliminating, uh, the meat and potatoes, as far as I'm concerned, of many of the things that, uh, I, I just don't understand why they're trying to make it so concise. That's all. I, I am not favored.
Well, and doing it without consultation with this commission, really.
Well, their consultation was to get us a packet to let us look at it.
Yeah. That's not, that's not consultation.
I went over pretty thoroughly today, and I got a whole list of things that we were gonna discuss, I was gonna bring up tonight. There's things in there like the commercial stable. That's in, uh, like, production and innovation area?
Yeah.
Why would it be there?
Yeah.
I mean, that'd be more of a rural-
Rural area.
Farming area.
Yeah.
So, and there was a lot of things about parking, uh, a tavern can only be allowed in the town center, and it requires parking. Everything else in town center has no parking.
Yeah, right, right, I agree.
So, and so, I just had a whole list, but that's just some of the stuff.
I, I just prefer if we, you know, I've called Josh, I have not gotten a response from him, I know he's busy, but, uh, I sent that information with regards to the enforcement issue that we'll talk about next, or a little later. And, uh, he never even acknowledged that he got it. You've mentioned that, but he never acknowledged that he had it. I don't know whether he got it or not. I've communicated with him by email that way before. But, uh, and he's been working on the budget, so I'm not gonna try to, but anyways, if you don't mind, let's wait until we get some more clarification for, uh, why are they doing what they're doing? Because there, there are things, I mean, they're not perfect, but there are things that we're working on. Peter's working on it with a subcommittee to, uh, a number of items that's been months and months that have gone on the driveway permit thing.
Yeah, wet, steep slopes, and then everything.
Yeah.
Can I ask whose initiative this was?
This thing here?
Yeah.
The selectmen came up because wanted to change their ordinances.
Oh, but that's their ordinances?
Yeah, I, I never heard anything about the land use, uh, regulation, so somebody has thrown that into the hopper as well.
Okay.
But anyways, what's your take?
Well, that's it. I feel like it's like an emergency, but I don't understand the urgency. And I was on the committee and the subcommittee, and we redid all these regulations, and we spent a lot of time doing that, so to rush it, to do this doesn't feel appropriate, so.
Alright. Adam, you got any thoughts?
I'm just reading through right now.
Okay. I think we should wait till we get some genuine input from the reason for it, to see how much effort we should be putting into it. I, I just don't see the importance of it, frankly. So if that's alright with everybody, we'll let it sit.
I agree. If the commission wants to initiate changes to its regulations, which is what Peter and the subcommittee are doing, that's more than adequate.
Well, he's got, Peter had, I think, what, three or four different items that you were doing.
We had a list of items, yes.
Yeah.
Yup.
And it's being reviewed, so that, that's the way the process should be.
Yeah, because we've, we've had to sign change from ten to fourteen, from fourteen to ten days. We had the water parking, we had steep slopes that we had talked about. Still waiting from, have you seen anything on the driveway ordinance from the-
Jim and I have not had a chance to really touch base, so I don't know if he's-
So that's been two months, we've been waiting for that from the town attorney?
Oh, alright, let me, I'm actually gonna talk to Kevin again tomorrow, so.
Because that's the last couple of things we've been told.
Okay.
That was supposed to be the center by Michael.
Yup. That was, so Michael is here for the town attorney, and we've heard nothing since then.
Yeah, alright.
I mean, I read it, George, and, and I feel the same as everyone. Um, there's a lot of mistakes that were put in there, and that goes to show why, if they're gonna hire a company to do something like that, they need to work with some members of this board, because we have intimate knowledge of what's going on and why we have things in there. And that's, and I agree with you, I don't think, uh, we should entertain anything to do with this.
Okay. Lance, you talked to Josh, you see him. Can you explain what we just talked about tonight?
Yeah, of course.
If he's interested in doing it, let's add him to an, an agenda.
Yeah, I just wish I had been here for a part of it, because I'm, I'm doing not a good job of explaining. My understanding is it's just a search mechanism for, on the town website, to be able to pull up certain, like, if you wanna say, what's setback requirements or something simple. But, um, and I thought Pam may have made copies for you, because I know it says, like, even if she read the first thing, it was a reference to something in the, in the current regs. But without looking at them simultaneously, it looked like it had been redlined out, and the truth is, it's referencing-
No, no, there's substantive-
She did the whole thing?
There's substantive changes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there's a lot of significant changes in there.
I don't think, Lance, I don't think any of us here have a problem with it being on the website and where you can, where a resident can, uh, access it easily.
I like the idea of the chart.
But, but when you're changing stuff that this board has worked hard to, to put on paper-
Right.
Without our knowledge or without our input, now you got an issue, so, I mean, that's where it goes. I don't, I don't think that the, the plan of what to do is not a bad thing, um, but how it was done-
No, no, and I think, unless I'm miss, missing the bow, which is potential, is, I don't believe it changed wording unless it references a state statute. So it cleaned it up that way. And then, again, because in the red line, you, you miss out on what it's referring back to.
Right.
You know, without the whole packet, you don't have something to reference back to. So I, I get it, but I'm, again, not doing a good job of explaining what the goal is. I'm not gonna put you in the spot, but I mean, the selectmen might be the next ones to just speak, what was the thought process when you were going through that? Um, let me, let me work on that maybe in the next two weeks.
Well, it's not trying to make this complicated, it just seems to be making it complicated for us, because we've never had the justification for it. And if we can join hands and, uh, and, and make the thing a better service for applications people wanna inquire, you know, I don't have any problem with that, and I don't think anybody on the commission does, but we've got a lot of time spent on these things to be, you know.
The problem is, people are gonna use this, and we don't wanna mislead people, having them read something that we didn't have input on that we don't believe belongs in, in that, on that site, is what the whole thing bears down to. I mean, there's a lot of mistakes that, you know, we don't want in there, so.
Yeah, the ones that were caught.
I mean, if, if somebody had worked with us, that would have been done already, so.
And it wasn't just redlining, there was actually added, added stuff. It wasn't just clear enough language, like, whole ordinances that were added.
Added.
Really?
Okay.
Yeah, there was one, I'm trying to remember, I just, I read it today.
Anyway, why don't we, why don't we put this off on the back burner until we get some clarification, maybe some justification for what, what, why should, where do we need to spend the time on it?
So the, there's a whole definition on campsites that was added, which I didn't quite understand why it was there, and that was something I was gonna question tonight. Is, you're gonna have one campsite, but it's gotta be part of a recreational community? What is, what, I don't understand what it means. And then, uh-
Well, it's, you know, Willie, it's enough that there's substantive changes that weren't adopted or proposed by this commission.
They're not reviewed either.
Nobody else has a right to-
They're not reviewed by anybody.
Nobody else has a right to propose changes to the planning and zoning regulations, except this commission.
And if we have a public hearing, how are we gonna explain it to the public when we don't even understand it, so?
We could not do that. We could not have one, given that these are not promulgated by this commission.
Alright, well, let's, let's just put this on the back burner until we get a better explanation, and, uh, uh, if we're gonna work on it, we might set up a special meeting just for this, you know, issue. Because if it's that important, and, uh, it's been on our, we've been carrying these things for months. And, uh, alright, any more comments about that?
I was here during the driveway ordinances. No, that was just a separate initiative, because we didn't have it.
Sure.
Shouldn't that be included as well?
Well, that's, that's-
And that was done properly.
Yeah, well, I mean, that Peter's got, he's been talking about that, but, but then there, it went from being an issue that should be handled by planning and zoning, back to it being handled by the selectmen, so I mean, what are we even getting involved with?
Because it's an ordinance by charter, it has to go through the selectmen.
Which is kinda weird, but we could talk about that, Willie.
Also, also as the commission planning and zoning, we can only go by regulations by state statute.
And that was done properly.
That was probably-
This is, we don't know.
Right.
Okay, alright. So we'll leave that alone for now. That's everybody's agreement. Alright, six, Bravo eight, twenty-four referral on sale of Bachelor Elementary School to Northwest Senior Housing Corporation. I think we've all received a packet with regard to- No, I toured, uh, when we went up and, uh, we did the walk-through on the building, I was there that day, and we walked through all together.
That's right.
What your presentation was. If you could just give everybody a little bit of a summary about what it is, and, uh, because you're talking about not taking the entire property, you're gonna have some that's gonna be set aside for conservation, uh, and then there's a, a, a garage or something that the town wants to hold out to, maybe you could just bring us all up to-
Okay, thank you very much for hearing us this evening. Uh, my name's Larry Hanafin. Uh, I serve as the president and have been that, in that capacity for the last ten or eleven years now, for the Susan B. Perry Senior Housing up on one fifteen Spencer Street. And with me tonight is our consultant, David Berto with Housing Enterprises, and he was the consultant when we, uh, built the first twenty units that have been very successful, I might add. Since we opened in two thousand twelve, we've, uh, we've had a waiting list up there for, uh, but people trying to get in, so there certainly is a need for additional housing in, uh, in the community. Now, I'll turn this over to David, who, he's the guru of what we're doing up there, or hope to get done up there. David?
Sure. Thank you. Some months ago, the town came out with a request for proposal for using the bachelor school for different uses. And I worked with the Northwest Senior Housing Corporation to put in the application to have the school used by converting it to apartments for housing, for apartments. And after a number of discussions, it was, uh, determined that that was the acceptable proposal from the Board of Selectmen. And part of the proposal was that the organization would take ownership of the property and then develop the property, and that's why it's in front of U-824, because it's for disposition of town property. The plan has evolved as we've worked through some of the details from our initial application, and then there were discussions with the town and other folks that were interested. And, uh, the way it stands right now is that the entire building will be used for the housing. The classrooms will be used for apartments, and the common spaces will be adapted for different common space uses. And the areas right around the building that are already developed will remain developed, but all improved with additional funding to really make them much nicer, deal with the concerns of the neighbors as far as quality of presentation and light shining in the other houses and things like that. And the property up the hill that's wooded will remain wooded and will either be established with a conservation easement on it, or will, will be retained by the town. And those details haven't been worked out yet, but in any case, the rest of the parts that are undeveloped will remain undeveloped. And the housing will only be dealing with the works of the building itself in the developed areas around it. And after we, uh, get through this part of the process, uh, we'll be working, and this leads to a town meeting for the final approval. We are already working on getting funding to move the project forward and putting in applications and do further details. Uh, we've had some good inputs from the neighbors. The neighbors put a set of comments together, and we've already responded to those. They were good comments, many of which we were going to do anyway, that folks just didn't know, because they don't know how we do things collectively. And I think, uh, it's gonna have good support in the neighborhood and throughout the town, and if we get more inputs, we'll try to accommodate those as well.
What's the scenario? How does this flow? What's that goes through this commission? Because we're just giving a, a recommendation, either a negative or positive.
Correct.
So it goes back to the Board of Selectmen, and then the Board of Selectmen will then act to bring it to a town meeting?
Yes, there'll be a town meeting in order for the town to approve the future transfer of the property. And then through the development process, we will still go through the same process we will with you guys for all approvals.
David, is this gonna be a net zero building also, or?
That's a detail that we haven't got to yet. It's got a very nice roof on it.
It does.
And it doesn't have a lot of trees, uh, in the roofline. We're trying to do that. The first thing we're gonna do is try to make it as energy efficient as possible. And if we can get the funding for solar panels, we certainly are already looking at that in order to minimize the operating costs.
Right, absolutely.
Do you know how many units you're gonna have, Dave?
About thirty, and most of them will be, uh, one bedrooms with some two bedrooms, and I think if I do one efficiency, because of the way the rooms are laid out.
And it's, and it's not gonna be market rate, it'll be affordable for subsidized senior housing?
This'll be affordable housing for different ranges of median incomes for different family sizes and incomes.
But sen, but senior?
No, it's not gonna be elderly restricted. It's gonna be open to everybody, but because of the large number of one bedrooms, and it's all on one floor, it's all on one floor plus an elevator, and then it's on one floor.
True.
Uh, it's gonna be, uh, very attractive for elderly, and elderly will certainly be among those that can apply.
Because I guess the, we were up there walking through, the gymnasium was that whole common area, so how would, how would, you said you'd get it using it for, you know, occupants to be, what, what do you visualize that space for?
That's a detail we haven't got to yet. We had acknowledged right from the beginning that that was more common space than we really need. And we had offered to the town that if there was some other uses of it, we'd be happy to have that discussion, and it's been determined that that's more complicated and that we will retain the whole thing. And, uh, as of today, we don't have the answer to how it's gonna be used. You know, it's got a, a kitchen in it already, it's got a place for eating, it's got a place for exercise. There's a lot of possibilities there. Fortunately, it's laid out in a way that we don't have to do a lot to it immediately to make the whole building work, and we can work on that in parallel.
Hey, Dave, do you have any idea what this does to our, uh, and I don't know that you would know this, but you might. What it does to the town's affordable housing numbers?
It helps the numbers a little bit.
It changes the number, but yeah, how much?
It increases the percentage, of course. But, you know, it's still only thirty units, but it's thirty units that you don't have before. And it's, the, the other thing it's doing though is it's showing the progress, which stands up in court as being helpful, just by having progress.
I also looked through the notes here, too, so the town is actually gonna receive taxes on this building also, which is a plus.
This will be subject to property taxes, yes.
Go for it.
And by the way, we did the same thing, uh, up at the Susan B. Perry Housing. When we built it, we came in voluntarily, and I think it's the first time that the, uh, tax collector in town said, "We've never had anyone come in here and ask to pay taxes on their property." So we negotiated with the town of Winchester to pay taxes, and we pay today. Why? Because we wanna be good neighbors, Charlene. We use the facilities up there.
Because they did all that work to make it a nonprofit.
But we have to, we have to use water, we need the roads plowed.
Well, you'd be paying water and sewer regardless. That's not property taxes. That's separate from the property taxes.
I'm talking about it.
Yeah, right. I've got my other hat on, stop.
We'll file an exception tomorrow morning. Thank you, Charlene. No, no, only kidding.
Do you, do you have any idea exactly how many acres of property you're gonna need to use with the school, with the building, and how many acres will be possibly retained by the town, or used for conservation? Because that's about a little over thirty-two acre piece of property, so it's quite large.
Well, it is, and more than half of it will be retained as a common reserve space. I don't know the actual details of the, uh, the acreage, but we're only asking for and retaining control and developing that which is already developed.
Well, it's already cleared, basically.
It's not gonna clear anything.
That's it.
Roughly eight acres or so, you know, that is.
Probably.
Yeah, because that property goes down the hill behind all the houses, all the way down almost a lovely street, and up the hill quite a ways. It's, it's a huge piece of property. I'm very familiar with it, so, because, uh, you know, part of our job is the Planning and Zoning Commission is going through our plan of conservation and development, so we're concerned with that, with retaining that, what it is.
Yeah, but it's not gonna be any more development than what's already there.
I, I'm all for this. This is like, fills two needs right off the bat, tax revenue and elderly housing.
It's not elderly, it's, I mean, it may-
Well, it could be.
Affordable housing.
Affordable housing, it could be elderly housing, and there's a lot of elderly people that need a place to go here.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it'll end up being a lot of, you know, because of the size.
Single unit apartments, or we could get some young kids maybe, you know, move out of their parents, or whatever, and it's, I think it's a good thing.
Something we don't have.
And we're gonna pay for it, too. We're paying three hundred thousand dollars for it.
We're buying it.
Yeah, I saw the other.
Despite the newspapers always making it appear that, uh, we were coming in and getting this property for nothing, and they just couldn't quite get it to write we were gonna pay the town three hundred thousand for the property. Plus, they will keep that little garage they wanted for the maintenance. Plus, they will keep that little garage they wanted for the maintenance shed as you first enter there.
Who will?
The town of Winchester, that's going over to them.
Yeah.
Because they store some of their equipment there, so they can have that as well.
Okay, anybody else have any questions?
Any issues with remediation of existing structures for, excuse me?
Asbestos and environmental remediation.
Hazardous materials. We've done initial evaluations, visual evaluations of the property. The town has required that it be transferred as is in whatever condition it is. They have not left inspections for hazardous materials, but we were able to see the property pretty clearly. It's just the classrooms. And we will be going through a hazardous material inspection report for landing asbestos, things like that. And if we find any, we will put that into our remediation lab, but we'll get funding to clean it up.
And then put the town.
Wasn't that done at one time, bachelor school?
No, the almacantic for the ceiling tiles is asbestos.
Yeah.
There's engineering reports and all kinds of reports on that.
I thought I read something that was done.
Not, not, not bachelor, yeah.
Floor tile was done, but not the ceiling tiles.
Gotcha.
So the town will be liable, will not be liable for anything that's existing?
Correct.
Water supply to, is water supply impacted or versus, or I imagine the school, being a school, would have sufficient water supply.
It's on the sewer system.
Yeah, it's on city water.
City sewer.
It's got city water and sewer.
And the fact that they're living there, you know, versus just attending school, temporary population, like getting out, I'm sure the systems were adequate coming into there.
I'm sure it is.
The system.
You mean the water flow?
The water, yeah.
Yeah, right. They'll have to check all that out, and they'll have to, they'll have to come in for permits and all that stuff.
They're not asking.
This is not, this is not approval of it. This is a concept.
They're not, your offer was not subject to the town doing anything beyond what's already served there.
That's right.
Just so you know, Adam, when they put a water supply, it doesn't matter if you're there part-time or full-time, it's always the same, just so you know.
True. Anybody else have any comments?
So do we have to do something?
We have, it's our responsibility on the eight twenty-four, either give a positive recommendation to the Board of Selectmen or a negative.
Can we add conditions to that or not? Or just be yes or no?
It's a recommendation.
It's only a recommendation.
If there are additional buildings, maybe we consider leasing those to places that can provide products or services to those that would be living nearby if there aren't any other offerings local, especially if, I know it's not elderly. Not focused for elderly only, but sometimes, often we put those, those have facilities around others that can support them.
Well, unfortunately, Adam's new to town, so he's not familiar. This is up in a residential neighborhood at the, like on a dead end street, way up in the woods essentially. So it's all residential, and it's a built-up residential area. There's no new anything going in there other than this kind of thing at the moment.
So there's nothing else than walking distance.
No. I mean, if you can walk downhill to town and then walk back uphill, it's uphill all the way, both ways.
I was gonna say that, Charlene. You get downtown, how do you get back?
Exactly. Need a little tram, right, Uber or tram.
We will be looking at whether there are opportunities within our common spaces to provide some service spaces, like hairdressers and health service and stuff like that. That could be of value to the people that live there, but perhaps of value to the neighborhood as well. And as Charlie says, it's really sort of isolated, it doesn't lend itself to a commercial faction.
Are you proposing laundry facilities there also?
Laundry?
Laundry facilities?
Yeah.
Yeah, because that's big, that helps.
I don't have laundry.
Yeah, I think we're down to one laundry mat right now, right?
Yeah, in town?
Yeah, we had a couple.
That was still open, it got closed.
I don't know.
Maybe you're right.
Only one is the bug there, yeah, there's a ladybug.
But anyways, let's move this along if we can.
I'll make a motion to make a positive eight twenty-four referral for the sale of Bachelor Elementary School to Northwest Senior Housing Corporation with the suggestion of the condition that all forested property remain, either remain property of the town of Winchester or be put in a conservation easement.
Second, any further discussion of the motion in the second? All in favor? Got a positive recommendation?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My guy, I know, Swartchenager says we'll be back.
Yep, we'll see you again, yeah, okay, good.
Then the meetings get a little more difficult, don't they?
Nah, nah, we're easy, we're easy.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.
Don't get carried away. Let's not go too far.
Good night.
Good night.
I don't wanna forgive my boy. Long walk in North.
I'd have to bring her to work tomorrow.
That's right.
That's right. All right, we've got, the next one is Approval of Minutes, April tenth, two thousand twenty-three. We've got a copy over there with our.
Yeah, I got one correction, I found page two, like the third paragraph up, says Barkhamsted Fire Chief, that should be Winston Fire Chief.
Where exactly are you?
Uh, page two.
Yep, I got it.
Up from the bottom, where I asked a question.
I thought you talked about, without the other.
No.
The other.
It was Winston Fire Chief.
Okay, Winston, instead of Barkhamsted, okay.
I get it now.
Yeah, I did mention Winston, the Barkhamsted Fire Marshal.
Yeah.
Winston Fire Chief.
I can see where I get confused, because you had to talk to both, I know that.
Yes, because I talked to both, and it's the same person. So that's what makes it good.
That's true.
That clears it out.
Okay, how's that? I'll admit that. I'll make a motion, we approve minutes of our April tenth meeting.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussions? All in favor? All right, communications.
There was none written again. Don't believe I have anything from email, but I can let you know some things going on. I guess it's support, communication, whatever. I don't know if everybody knows, but Pam has decided to transfer over to the tax office, to tax collector. Trying not to take it personal, everybody leaving, but, so she graciously though will be training the person who will be replacing us, the land use coordinator. We actually had an interview with someone that we think is a strong candidate on Friday who went through the TPW process, I'm sorry, for the water plant, but she works at TPW as always. I haven't reached out yet to offer because we still have to wait, union stuff, if anybody wants to transfer within Town Hall. But we'll be filling that relatively soon. And then, I know we had a quick conversation, we did put out and for the Assistant Town Planner slash CEO, inland wetlands agent, huge job. We had four applicants for the first go-around that we just thought were strong. We had one drop out unfortunately because we had a little lag in time. Did come out of that last three with a candidate that we've offered the position to, and he hasn't technically accepted yet, so I don't know if I can officially say anything. But I talked to him again today, he seems interested, so that's promising.
We had sent a letter to Josh, things that we were looking to suggest that would not put somebody on, so that's up, you know, Josh and the town.
And I'll follow up again.
But the thing was the certification process and what's gonna be adhered to, so we get some process that's gonna take place, so we get somebody qualified and certified, not just a stepping stone to another community.
Well, they have to be by law.
I understand, but we need a commitment when you sign.
What, how long?
Right.
Was that all discussed?
Yeah, and many towns are going through that right now. There's just not enough CEOs especially for the people that are hiring, and almost everybody that's applying to have not had the CASIO training.
But that's what Troy was mentioning, if somebody could do it with that process and work for a number of towns. But, I mean, we sent the suggestion in, it was all presented, but I never even got acknowledgement that it was there.
What's with that? I mean, it was like a list of, I mean, that person technically works to enforce this commission's regulations. And we've had a history of lax or absent enforcement in this town, as you know already, even though you're new. And something's gotta be done about that. And Troy and the chairman put forth a good list. We didn't even get acknowledgement from the town manager. I know there's a selectmen here, and that's why I'm saying this, because that, that, that's not right. It's being consultation with this commission that somebody has hired as zoning enforcement officer.
Well, along those lines with the two twelve, West Wakefield Boulevard, the problem's there, and we got a bridge going in at the end of the lake. I talked to Steve Malinelli about, you know, what, because they're, it's their, you know, they're really involved with the lake, and he's not a happy camper with this process, and that we don't have a proper enforcement.
Of course, right.
And he said to me as we talked, that what's the point in even having land use meetings? If we're not gonna have enforcement, why should we spend so much time trying to do a good job with it? And everybody gets agreement about the progress or a process for the proposed development, and then nobody does anything about it. It's like what we saw up there at actually two twelve, because the guy doing the enforcement waived one of the requirements about the filtration of the water to go back into the lake.
Based on what?
Yeah, I don't know if that actually ever happened, to be honest, I'm not really sure.
Well, they've got something going on.
I know it went through a wetlands meeting, and I was there, but I'm trying to remember when I was, I mean, literally that was my first day involved with two twelve, and I just went to kind of like be a part of it, assuming Michael was still gonna be the lead. My remembrance of it was, we would just literally went through all the conditions. The packet that I gave you is the thing, I have the two reports that are most recent, and then has the conditions from wetlands and also planning zone. So I'm just trying to keep everything in precise.
Oh, that's good.
And to be honest, I'm having a very good response from that team because.
Well, that's a, that's a different one, isolated.
Right, we'll talk about that in a minute.
A well-managed project, the two twelve project. But in general, you shouldn't be doing enforcement, you're the town planner. We need an enforcement officer who will go out and do enforcement and not spend time here in Town Hall, but go out and enforce things. And that's what Troy was suggesting, he has, you are a certified enforcement officer. So he brings real world knowledge of what that job entails, yet this body and these talents were not consulted with for the hiring of whoever it is you're hiring, and.
It seems a little out of order.
For example, one of the points I was trying to make is a part-time person would be available on the weekends. This weekend was catastrophic damage at the bridge, so that zoning officer should have been on site, and if you work nine or, you know, seven to three and you're done.
Right.
And you're not coming back, then this is when things happen on the weekends. I know that because I lived it. And, you know, working on the weekends was huge for Harwington. I saved a lot of problems there for the.
This is real world interaction with these rules and regulations. I don't know what Josh experience he has, but I'm gonna go out on a limb and say I doubt he has much. And to not include some of these people in that, I'm making this statement for the record, Lance, as you can figure out, so that people understand that this commission's not happy with any of this stuff, and it's a longstanding, decades-old problem of no enforcement in this town. So that's it, it's on the record. I've been paying attention to them, and these people all are experienced in zoning and in enforcement and all these, and, you know, they put in a lot of time and effort. I'm a newcomer, like Adam, and, you know, this isn't, this isn't the way the process should be, and the results are obvious. When things aren't enforced, it's, why are we looking at?
Well, why do we even have a?
Why are we looking at zoning amendments? I mean, what we have isn't even enforced. And on that note, you know, I liked having Mike's attempt to do an enforcement report, which now we're not gonna see.
No, you will. There's gonna.
I know, but you shouldn't be doing it, Lance, that's the point. You're gonna do, you're gonna be the CEO and the town planner? Oh, that's great.
And a defencation at the bottom.
So nothing's gonna get involved.
Actually, I won't brag, but I am kind of rocking it a little bit, even though it's not what I wanna do. You know, with wetlands, I've been following up.
Well, that only enables the whole process of not getting proper personnel in this town to do what needs to be done. This is not the Wild West anymore. We're trying to develop a real town here, a grown-up town, that actually has a cohesive body of regulation and follows it. And, boy, it's hard whipping this town into shape. And, you know, we, this group, I've listened to this panel a year now, and they put conditions on zoning approvals, and then you drive around town, even as a novice, and you see how many things aren't done that are, they, the applicants have agreed to and are a part of, stipulated as part of the approval of the commission, and they aren't done. They just aren't done, they're just ignored. That is a big signal that things aren't working.
I mean, some of these things are simple, like she's saying, Charlene's saying. For example, the Del, Deli over here, right? Alls we ask for is fence around the garbage cans. You go over there, you tell them they're gonna, you're gonna close their permit down, and they're not gonna have the restaurant until that fence is put up.
Same at the Quick Stop.
It's very simple.
Quick Stop's another.
Same at the Quick Stop, they said they do, it's not done.
I mean, that's what you do. And just so you know, there's another mimic storm that's coming this weekend also, so you might wanna get out there at the end of the week and make sure the contractor takes every precaution so that doesn't happen again on the bridge and the cofferdam, so.
Yep.
I just watched the news tonight.
Next question for you. I'm gonna do Deli tomorrow because you guys keep bringing it up.
Quick Stop, too.
And the fence is down.
It looks terrible.
Fence is down, and there's a dumpster full of stuff there today.
I see that, I drive in every day.
They cleaned up the fence, so.
I totally understand.
What are they planning on doing? Do we have any?
I haven't talked, I haven't talked.
They've taken the fence down, but have they pulled any permits for a new fence or what, you know?
It's now the new priority, so, yep, okay. But I have been chipping away at the list, to be honest.
Where, where do we stand with ECAD? Did they go to wetlands last week?
They did, they went to wetlands, they were approved. I was kind of surprised I brought up, one of the conditions would be in the paving of the driveway, which would change drainage, but, or didn't seem to have an issue with it.
Did they require ECAD drawing or anything else?
Yeah, well, they're gonna have to now submit, and it's supposed to be, I think, the, actually, I let Alan know, gave him that, you know, last meeting we denied without prejudice, so it's in their court essentially to reapply. Now, in the meantime, Bill Petroface, they do not have a temporary CO.
Right, that's what I was gonna bring up, that I heard on TV, last Monday night's selectment meeting, they don't have a temporary permit, nobody can find it, and.
No, there isn't one.
So are they still operating? But are they operating and using the structure?
They are, so.
So is the town now accepting the liability?
They are.
If anything happens, because it's all on the town.
Right.
And everybody in that office.
Right.
Basically.
And you're not allowed to put another application in until the first one is finished.
Well, so the question is, is there enforcement going on?
No, zero.
I don't know, that's what I'm asking, what's happening?
Yeah, so the seven conditions that were laid out in the original temporary CO, Bill is actually working with him to get that established, and so they can write a temporary CO.
And the town is not allowed to use it in the meantime.
Again, my answer would be no, to say it on camera, but.
Wait, wait, it's up to you, you're the enforcement officer.
You're the department head.
Okay.
Who do you think it's up to?
Building department works for you, fire marshal works for you. I'm just asking, the town is gonna let them use the building with no CO.
I would think the answer is no, to be honest.
And we know about it, and they're gonna let them use it.
Well, how are you gonna stop it?
Well, I'm not sure.
Then we could do that, then everybody in this town could do the same thing.
I know, I know.
I don't need a CO for my house.
But if he's acting as an enforcement officer, he's gotta make it, he's gotta make it, do an action.
I mean, there needs to be a timeframe or a cease and desist or something to get this thing moving.
This is not what our commission operates by.
It's seven years now.
Right. Well, the short answer is we're trying to get them right, at least to have a temporary CO that's only gonna have six. Well, the short answer is, we're trying to get them right, at least to have a temporary C O that's only gonna have six months. No open-endedness, we have six months.
Well, there should be some stipulations of complying with the original approval in two thousand sixteen.
Correct, right.
There's buffering, we went up there during the winter and walked through the snow and so forth. And they had these small trees that were right up against the stone wall, I mean, none of that is acceptable. None of it was laid out that way. So I think that if they are gonna come in with an application, they need to comply with the original approval and get buffering in there. There's a house that's above there that looks down on this whole complex. I don't know how they got a sign on that building like that, looks like an industrial facility.
Because there's no enforcement, George, that's how they get it.
Well, I know, I understand what the, what the answer is.
Yeah.
But how did they get it, and why should they continue to have it? And they presented, when you read the minutes of that in two thousand sixteen, they represented to the commission, which I wasn't on it there, Craig was the, you were the chair.
I was the chair.
You were on it, right? That, that, the building would be designed and built to ref- to resemble farm buildings.
Correct.
That doesn't look like a farm building, looks like our industrial park. So, they're not gonna change that, but they sure as hell could do some things to be in compliance. And, and I don't know how we're even, even consider additional building up there until they get that straight.
Is this the third time coming through now?
Yep.
And they have not done, to my knowledge, so I, I'm somewhat incapacitated, so, but to my knowledge, minimal consideration has been given to those conditions that are originally put. The road was supposed to be twenty feet to accommodate the, the fire trucks. There, I, I can't remember, I'm Bill Good's going back, you know, I'm three years old, I don't have the recall.
But that's not your responsibility, it's his.
I realize, but I'm just saying, it, it irritates me to no end that seven years, six years, whatever the hell it is later, we're still talking about the same things. And we're, we're gonna, again, now you're saying you're gonna pave the road, okay? This is, the neighbors, no wonder they're up in arms. Cause nothing has been done to ameliorate the situation that was presented to them. And the conditions that were presented to them were an effort to make that a little bit more plausible. And it was not done, and hasn't been done. And this, this is the third time to my knowledge, am I correct?
Third time they've come before us. We proved it twenty twenty-one, the second project.
Right, and it's all been modified.
That they're coming back to modify now.
And not one time have they done any of those. And I, I just, I, I'm irritated by that only from the standpoint that I was responsible for that decision.
Well, and plus, I'm told that they did some, uh, work up there with more paving and so forth without a permit during this last season.
Yeah, I'm not sure that's correct, though, the pavement that was-
All right, well, whatever it is, it is, I mean, I'm not, I-
I don't think there was any paving, but I think it was additional gravel and parking areas.
Well, whatever it is, we need to have some compliance. Otherwise, why keep going through this whole process? Go through it, get a nice presentation, they commit to agreeing with things, and then turn around and they don't do it, and nobody enforces it. So, anyway, you got the, I think you get the message. All right, uh-
Yeah, I think we put it out pretty clear tonight.
I, I mean, that's, that's why somebody from this commission should have been on that interview panel, so that that, those people understand what it is to be a zoning enforcement officer. I don't know that what Josh or you said to me.
We said that that's the number one priority.
No kidding, that's the name of the position, zoning enforcement officer.
No, assistant planner is the first part of the position. That's the way it was legally advertised in the Waterbury, so, yes. Go look at the legal notices.
What? So that means it's gonna be a full-time position, and they're gonna spend time in the office?
I don't know.
No, it's pretty much the same position that Michael, those same guidelines that we had.
Michael was in here a lot.
Yeah.
It's not like we don't notice these things.
Well, Steve is sitting here, he's listening to what we're talking about. There's, there's a, definitely a miscommunication between the town manager and his hiring practices and what we need from the land use, wetlands and us.
And it's not all Josh, it's been going on for years. Uh, but we've had a revolving door of town managers. It's not about all Josh, but it has been a chronic problem, and there are ways to solve it, and his approach was, has not been-
Who's gonna be the boss in the land use office, you? They're gonna work, everybody's gonna work under you?
Yeah, they do.
Okay.
Yep.
So you gotta be the heavy hand to make sure they ain't sitting in that office.
And I went this, like, to say- Right, well, like, one thing Michael and I had gotten into place and unfortunately kinda fell apart was, uh, every Tuesdays he would go out in the field, and we would do the town in different quadrants, I don't know if I explained this already, for Blight. And then basically, the thought was, by the fifth week, you go back to the first set of what you were looking at, and see what had happened for follow-up letters, and then, you know, if there'd been any action going on. Uh, that was working very well until they left, unfortunately, so I'd like to get that going again when we get the new body.
So that's just for Blight, what about zoning enforcement?
That was Blight, which was a big part, and then zoning enforcement?
People who have made application, done projects, and then not fulfilled their requirements to comply with the conditions of the approval.
So for two months now, I've been chipping away at all the wetlands approvals that were out there, and just being seen, make sure they have self-fencing, basically, you know, and then, and then for the ones that have come-
You're the wetlands enforcement officer too?
Doing that at the moment, yes.
Okay, does anybody see a problem here?
No, that's why we're not even talking about it.
Really? Was Lance gonna be like, are you living here now?
I don't, we, I was here over the weekend.
Yeah, he was at the lake Saturday, Sunday afternoon, about two thirty.
But, um, like today, I said, was my first time in court, it was technically virtual, but this was for Scott Pashon's property, two fifty-seven, two fifty-nine. Um, you know, this has been a longstanding thing, I, I see him every week, we talk, and what's, what's gonna be the steps for basically enforcement, and then, um,
But that's, that's one that's already gone through town attorney, and it's in court.
Right, and finally, yeah.
We're talking about a lot of this make, little, this other stuff.
I mean, Thirty Mountain Avenue is a great example, the shed that was on the property line, if people just wanted to close to be able to purchase the property.
And the examples brought up here tonight by members of things that aren't being complied with, that they, that they have-
No, but, those are the things I'm actively working on right now, so, just saying, there's, there's a lot going on, but, um-
So if we look at Mike's last report, it was what, from?
March.
Was it March or February?
Well, it was February, but, yeah.
I mean, are any of those things taken care of?
Checked off, uh, at least worked on, I don't know if I could say checked off, but-
Okay, well, maybe at the next meeting we'll have it.
And then North Main Street, uh, that property. So the answer is yes, we've been working on it pretty diligently, and we know that's the, the priority.
And it's, the third problem is, it's nothing new.
No.
This has been going on for-
Decades.
All right, we can talk about it all night long, it's not gonna-
I'm glad we talked about it.
No, I am, I am absolutely pleased we talked about it, that's why-
Steve has heard us, our liaison's here, so, one of them.
Okay. Uh, so you're, uh, any more to your report?
The only thing I might mention since we have a little time, and, um, so we have the draft proposed change for zoning regulations for steep slopes. And this was, again, now a month ago, time just goes by so fast. I don't know if you wanna, I don't remember if we made this available, but I folded it, yeah, that was the folded version.
Ah, it's the first time that the whole commission has figured it out.
Maybe what we can do is just look at it in the meantime, and next one, next meeting, if you see anything that you think is a red flag. I know we've already kinda talked about it, um-
So this is the one, this is what you worked on?
The steep slope, yes. But I think for next meeting, we-
Just the one here?
Yeah. That was the one Dave Fieste and Todd Parsons from Larnard helped draw, drafted most of it.
And the Winset Health Center, uh, project that will be coming soon, they asked me if, if this had been looked at yet, and I said, well, no. We talked about it quickly, but, so I said, we'll bring it up tonight.
Okay.
But I think we need to discuss that and get that along with the other changes we made in the other parking, the signage.
Have you put something together as far as what you'd like to see us move on?
Um, we had the list you'd given us, the list from-
Yep, that was in your last, last month, um, April, or last week.
It was in the reading thing, but that's- There was a list of items there.
Let's see, one, two, three, six of them, this is not on there, and driveways is not on there.
We don't know, driveways, back to the selectment, right?
Yeah, I-
Stole it from town mayor, town attorney's.
Uh, I didn't realize it was Kevin, I'll ask-
That was what we were, that was last told.
Okay.
But I think like for the next agenda, unless we've got a heavy load there, you know?
No, I think it needs to go on, and, uh, so that we can get this. Okay, so here's- I don't have that, I don't either, I cleaned out tonight, you've been complaining about that.
You've got that in the list format, cause you've given it to us open time, the changes, okay?
Yeah, I can make that coming.
If we could summarize what you've, cause you've been working at it a lot of time, you've spent a lot of time on this driving.
Yeah, well, an easy quick summary was the, we talked about the, uh, sign, the reg- requirements for sign, changing it from fourteen days, the planning and zoning sign, to ten days. So that if someone comes in on a Monday, that we can, you know, they have to put a sign out for fourteen days. So if they got a sign on a Monday, we wouldn't be able to hear, accept their special permit for, actually for a month, cause we wouldn't be able to do it in two weeks.
So you're setting it to ten days?
Ten days, yes, yeah. The parking for the marina, to include boat sail, the storage, the fueling from, change it from one for, for fifteen hundred square feet to one per two available moorings. Uh, about the site plan requirement, where if there's no changes to the exterior of the building, as far as any additions to it protruding outside of the building, it wouldn't require the A two survey. That, um, what was the other ones we had? It was parking for cannabis facilities, which we had-
Oh, yeah, is that, you put that in there?
Yeah, that, that wasn't there, but we, we decided to go with the same requirements as like, say, the convenience stores, things like that. Was it one per three hundred square feet or something like that, I forget now what it was, but, yeah, it was something in that area.
Can we, uh, draft something up so that we have it as a presentation for us for our next agenda? And then we'll set up a public hearing with regards to it, and, uh, now that's gotta be notified to the, uh, to the, the regional,
Right.
and then our surrounding towns.
But at least if we could discuss it the next meeting, you know, including your steep slope things, and if they wanna make changes to it, then, then hopefully, you know, before summer comes, we can, you know, at least take some action on it, have a, have a public hearing and take some action on it one way or another.
Good idea.
And those things, to put those to bed, then we can move on with any new items that come up with that. Instead of adding anything different.
No, I wouldn't add any more.
No. Like I say, the driveway ordinance thing is, so we got some town attorney, and if it's gonna be an ordinance, then it's gonna be, have to be acted on by the selectmen.
Right. Okay, so we can, you can put that together, Lance, for us?
Yep.
All right. Uh, anything else anybody has?
Can I just say one more thing about-
No.
Mister Chairman, I just, because Lance didn't get a copy of that email you sent, George, I just wanna say on the record that the Connecticut General Statute eight dash three E one say this, "The zoning commission shall provide for the manner in which the zoning regulations shall be enforced." Now, that doesn't mean we can hire the Z E O, because our charter takes care of that, and makes that a responsibility of the manager. But it's clear that the state law considers the planning and zoning commission to be of such a stature that it adopts its own regulations and can provide for the manner in which they're enforced. And so if I do anything in my term as a member of this commission, it's going to be that the rules have to be enforced, and if it's gonna go through you, then that's where we're heading, because it's gotta get done. It's been too long not getting done.
It has been.
For a lot of different reasons, but that's neither here nor there.
All three applicants, I think we were pretty consistent in saying that is the priority of like, of the job. It's not easy, and it's time-consuming, and that's what we need.
Well, there's gotta be responses, like when we have a storm like this over the weekend, that they gotta be available to verify that everything is protected.
And, and this ECAD thing is a very, very good example
Oh, for sure.
of what's not being done, and how the residents of that neighborhood are unhappy with the town, and with probably this commission. Because they're, that-
I know they're not happy with us, cause I've heard of them.
No, no, it's true.
But I mean, I'm talking about the neighbors, not the applicant. The applicant is, is ignoring the requirements set by this commission. And like many other applicants, they've been getting away with it, and that's not right, so.
Well, yeah, there's a lot of history there.
What's the point of the work we do? We're required under state law to do this, we're, we're, we're given the authority to, to enforce the regulations, it's gotta get done.
So unfortunately, if you have a full-time zoning officer, okay, then you have to pay them overtime, and, and-
Well, that's why it should be a part-time position.
For the weekend, so that's a budget issue.
But that's why you recommended it be a part-time position.
Yeah, that way it's on a ten ninety-nine.
Part-time position?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No?
No, it's a full-time position.
Well, who, who made that decision?
That's what we suggested.
Right.
That it be a ten ninety-nine, so that we can-
Part-time?
Part-time, we paid an hourly rate, whatever it would be.
So who's the-
Plus mileage, and then-
Oh, maybe I'm misunderstanding them.
Well, I'm just saying, that's, that's what we sent the letter about, so that we got that framework out there.
No, we don't, we don't know what, what it is.
Yeah, we saved the town a lot of money in benefits and union stuff.
And put the focus on where it needs to be, which is out on the, out there, not in here, sitting in an office.
I'd rather see him have Monday, Tuesday off, or Wednesday, Thursday off than Friday, Saturday, Sunday off.
Very, very, very. All right, well, we've sent that letter to him.
I'll follow, I'll forward the copy to Lance.
That, that's fine, sure.
I thought you were on it, but maybe you weren't, so.
No, I, I just sent it to, uh, to Josh, and I sent it to, uh,
Okay.
a couple of the selectmen.
Well, Josh, I mean, really, Lance should see it, at least.
That's fine.
To not even get a response.
No, I know, I was a little shocked.
It's not, it's not politic.
All right, uh, any other comments or questions, anything else has to be added to the next month's, uh, first meeting? All right, motion to adjourn.
Uh-oh.
And second to Craig, any comments, all in favor? Oh, you're right.
More revolving door.
Thanks, I'll take that. I wanna see if he looks like that, too much crap there.
Did you see the emails, Tom?
And am I?
I'm not sure if you, uh, originally- So what, you actually look at it?
Uh, it's at the same level. It was before.
It's like you're ready, well, I'll show you.
Well, I gotta, I gotta-
I see that.
Yeah.
Well, the last time I drove by was just long, a while ago, six, seven months ago.
I do, and she was on you, my desk, I passed her.
The front, the front area. But that's really, uh, historical. So you're living in there, but like that, is that okay? You feel all right?
Yeah, I feel okay.
You don't have a pedeleph. Isn't it those doors that are on our thing?
Yeah, I, I'm trying to keep, once again, there's a lot of- Yeah.
I looked at your last night, and she was going on my side.
That's a solid, this still plays around.
Well, I-
Well, I, I thought I saw a minute.
So how's that case going forward, uh?
I mean, we didn't, of course, it settled today, which would be, I'm gonna, um, the judge would like that to continue. And I like.
Which, which room? Oh, 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 yes. No, that was just, uh, kind of a collection room.
Well, it looks like someone just.
I don't see. I know, you're gonna need a curtain. Advance, advance. I don't want everybody watching me getting out of the chair. Be all over the paper.